All selectmen are present. The secretary slash recorder is present. The town minister is present. First thing on the agenda, we have our minutes from last week.
Yeah, motions approved.
I'll second this motion. That's from May 4th meeting minutes. Any discussion on them, gentlemen?
No.
I thought they were transcribed perfectly.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
For a little short meeting, I said a lot of talking though.
Two signatures, your witnesses.
Yes, I should just... Well, I'm not having a heat flash for a change.
They already signed it?
Yeah.
Very good.
Is Linda coming over? When she's done, she closes house.
Well, we may skip her on the agenda, so she's here when you're up.
Well, if we do public comment, maybe she'll go in here.
We do, now we're gonna open up for public comment. Sir, anything? Nope. I'm gonna, I'm gonna close public comment.
I recognize your face, but I can't remember your name.
He's on the agenda.
He's on the agenda.
Renee?
Oh, I knew it, I knew it.
Okay, then I'm gonna give a moment for Linda to come on down, so we're gonna go to the second thing on the agenda, accepting the grant from New Hampshire Lakes, amount of fifteen hundred dollars and fifty seven, or fifty seven dollars and eighty four cents. And from our written email, it's a little bit more than we, than they anticipated, so that's good news. And they were looking at, everyone got the email, and it was also discussing how they're gonna implement that. They have more money, they have more. These are for the lakeside hosts.
Checking the votes.
Yes. So they got a few more dollars, which is fantastic. And so the check is, where's the check now?
It's not going to be passed through the town. We have to just accept the grant, sign the agreement, and they handle all payroll taxes and other expenses directly. So it's really just acknowledging that we will work with the New Hampshire Lakes to, by the service of monitoring the lakes, and they're gonna disperse and pay an individual to work so many hours and pay them directly, so the town really doesn't have to get involved with it.
Okay, excellent.
You wanna make a motion for it? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the grant per RSA 31:95-B3.
I'll second that.
Any amount of fifteen, fifty seven, eighty four.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we accepted that. Okay, the other item, we're gonna continue on with business. We're gonna go right to the memorandum of understanding between the selectmen and the town and the library. There was also sent an email. That's the grants.
I think there's a signature required for selectmen on that.
Okay. I think it's only one.
We might as well reduce the smarts a bit.
Might not, right?
Come on, Dave. Full hook him up to hang ball.
In case they work some overtime.
Renee, that's the one you've sent me.
Yeah, it should be in the package.
But you also sent it to me.
I did, I did, yeah.
I thought I'd written, saw it today.
And this is for a contact person, a lean or you lead a contact person? And/or have someone from association who's leading that off?
I'll look at the agreement in the past. I think it's a little bit burial, and you said you'd be by to sign it.
So we saw this agreement last, I think, two, a week or two weeks ago. And I, they, they made some underlying changes. Just that they're gonna, how, the changes were that when the library's open, they're gonna do some minor shoveling. And first four custodian services they're maintaining, they added first four, is not working, second four. And they're only responsible for one door, the front door. The other doors are only locked. That's the only changes that were made, the underlying ones. I have, I think it's a common sense memorandum of understanding. I have no issues with that.
Yeah.
You did give it to me.
I saw it online, I saw that they underlined it. I don't have a problem with that.
So we can, we can basically, we can send that out for signature?
Yeah.
And we have, we can make a motion to approve it, I guess?
Yeah, if you make a motion to approve it and sign it tonight, Colleen said that she would reach out to the trustees and they would all stop in on... They just couldn't coordinate all of them being assigned. So that's why there's a witness line for each one of them.
So I like to air a motion if you could.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Dunbarton Public Library trustees' responsibilities, Exhibit A, dated May 11th, 2017, with the underlying changes.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you wanna see a copy of it today, or did you get everything you needed?
Okay.
Which one did you send me?
I sent them all to you.
Okay.
They, I think, the only change might be the date at the top of that page. That I corrected. I sent them to you.
Renee, we almost, you want... You think she's ready, or?
I think we're ready.
Okay, let's come on up. And you have the, I'm gonna give the floor to a town moderator. He's gonna talk about the upcoming primary, special primary election and special election during the months of June and July.
We, and we may each have a little tidbit in here, but this will be election number four for me, and they just get easier as you do more. And this one, I don't, I don't expect a huge turnout. So, and yet, we still, we have to do it. So June 6th, we'll need to set up on the 5th.
Will you need any help for setup?
Well, actually, setup is your responsibility. I don't mean you personally.
That's why I was asking if you need any help.
I think the last election, the, the selectmen did come out and help. It doesn't take, it's just a matter of, I put maybe hour, one to two hours of total setup time, depending upon.
The big national elections, I think, there's more involved, but...
Right, but I'd say if it's more than hour, we'd be pushing it.
Well, now, even though this is, is not gonna be a huge turnout, it has to be set up as if we were expecting the maximum.
Right, so we don't anticipate a lot.
Everything has to be set up the same. We still have, you know, things have to be posted so many feet high on the wall, so many feet low on the wall to meet ADA requirements.
What's the number of booths, Linda?
Um...
Do we set up just a portion of them?
No, one booth for every, hundred or hundred twenty five?
Yeah.
It varies upon what type of election.
It does.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be...
It might be one fifty, but it's somewhere between a hundred and a hundred.
Yeah, it's still, most of the booths are gonna have to be...
Yeah, it's stipulated by the statute. And I can show you that.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, David just got an election book, 'cause I picked that up for him.
Good, yeah.
So if you set with that, just have to read it. And there's a lot to read. But we do have to set up as if it were a full-blown, full-ballot election.
And we, even if it's a small election, where you each have our own responsibilities?
The duties are the same.
Yeah. Good. So as it goes, Conrad, we'll need you guys here to sign off.
In the interest of the budget, because we obviously only budgeted for the town election this year. So in the interest of the budget, we are hoping not to have to recruit ballot counters, that you folks will be there and we can just all pitch in and count those ballots and do that reporting. Most of the people who count ballots volunteer their time, they don't accept a paycheck. But I, I think it'll be small enough, we can probably get away with... You wanna, you know, bring Sharon?
Right.
You know, bring whoever, whoever you want to. You know, you can certainly do that. But I don't expect there are gonna be a whole lot. Mike came in on Monday and counted the ballots. Mike and his wife came, and Mert Man came and helped count the ballots that had been delivered by the Secretary of State, so those are all set. We've had four absentee ballot requests so far, they've been mailed out. I will arrange with Constantly Pizza to take care of the meals. It probably won't be as much as it had been in the past, just because they're not feeding as many. First, from a staffing standpoint, though, I spoke with Anthony Stevens, the Assistant Secretary of State, yesterday. And we are still required to have the ballot clerks, we're still required to have supervisors, the selectmen. We're all still required to perform our duties, 'cause it's an election. We can, he did point out in the statute that we can probably get away with two ballot clerks instead of four, which would be a good thing, because they do normally get paid to do this.
Are the ballot clerks the one who preach you and hand ballots to you?
They're the ones who hand you the ballots, yes. What my thought was, I will go ahead and coordinate that. We get away with having two, we still have to have two at a time. You can't just have one person there handing out ballots. There always has to be another one. So if you folks wanna decide within the next couple of weeks, does one of you wanna be a floater and fill in for a ballot clerk? If they, you know, when they go to eat or whatever?
If we're gonna be there, I don't see any problem with that.
You won't be bored. Supervisors of the checklist, we could get away with two, but Anthony Stevens strongly recommended that we do keep all three.
And where are they, where are these positioned?
The supervisors of the checklist, they're usually right next to the table where the, the out ballots are cast.
Okay.
Yes, usually go through the guardrail and check out, hand your ballot.
And you checked off right there?
Get checked off there. And then the next table down is usually the supervisors. Now, they can probably rotate and just have, as long as they have two at a time. They have to have two, or they're gonna have to appoint somebody.
And there's another table usually have there for people who wanna come in and sign up for the voting, same-day voting?
That's the supervisors of the checklist, and that will be a separate table set up. That's all part of the setup.
But just normally Peter and...
Peter, Janet, and Superacy.
Superacy, yeah.
You think we'll need all three there, or just two?
Anthony, I mean, you can't, if you just have two and one of them goes to lunch, then you just count one. You always have to have two.
Okay, okay.
So...
I'll talk to Janet about it.
You always have to have two. I did, you know, me is already giving you all these figures. I'll show you, there's one for you, too. Second page is roughly what it, what I budget for a full-blown election. The second page could be my breakdown, that's how I budgeted this year's. I think I have my glasses on. So we are fortunate that so many people volunteered. We have a fair amount of that money, so we won't be hit as badly as...
So we spent four seventy-two so far?
That's what's, yeah, that's what's...
That was a larger election, too, so...
Yeah.
So that would be, it might be, we may be able to squeak it by.
We may be able to squeak it by. Now, knowing that we're not gonna have a fourth and fifth election, that's a good thing, too. So hopefully, I don't think it's really gonna impact our budget all that much.
Do you understand what I'm gonna click with, yeah?
So where you saved on the election ballots, it looks like you spent almost the election meals. You think it's gonna come in less than?
I'm gonna have to get a price from David, 'cause he usually gives me a price based on, you know, the maximum, you know, four ballot clerks and...
Which was pretty reasonable, anyway. I think it was like a hundred thirty dollars or something along those lines.
Mine was fifty-nine.
That's a lot of food.
Yeah, but without, you're not gonna have as many people, they actually...
We won't have as many people, so I, I'm sure that'll, that will be a lower price. So, and we will have, you know, one more election, so we're totally through after this. Now, where this is a primary, we're sure it's gonna be a low turnout, but when we get to the general election in July, we can expect a higher turnout, because it always works out that way.
Right.
So if we're really frugal with this one, and we all take turns wearing each other's hats, maybe...
One Republican, two Democrats?
And a Libertarian.
And a Libertarian.
So the three... Finally, period is closed.
Finally, period is closed, the ballots are in.
The issue is you can still do a write-in, and that's why they still haven't, you know, there's one candidate, but there's still potential for write-in, you gotta honor that.
Being a primary, they're gonna be deciding the Democratic.
That's really...
So when it's the general, it'll be the, there was only one Republican who ran, right? So it'll be Dave Booton, Jason Dubrow, 'cause he's the only Libertarian who ran, and then there were two Democrats, three?
Two.
Two.
Whoever wins the primary, so there'll be three people on the ballot in July. I have already put the sample ballots on the town website, so they're on there for people to see, and there's a set posted right out, the bulletin board out front.
Okay. Generally, the only thing we have to make sure of is that we have read available that...
Yeah, I just gotta catch a plane the next morning. Heading for California.
And then, and then, of course, after the election, I'm gonna assume that we're gonna get the tablet. Yeah, so that'll all be set up. So after the election, you're gonna have to make the run to Govstown to deliver the tablet and the...
Concord.
Concord, whichever way you go.
Then we, then we just have to break down those, huh? It's the same, I've practiced one time already. So we, now we have election officials, all three of us, who are not on the ballot, which is good.
Yes.
Yes, that'll be much better. So the setup is on Monday, and my plan, if Gary's not otherwise engaged, is to have Gary come and cover the office. While I go down... I'll go down after the setup has begun, and I'll just make sure we're still...
And we can do the same thing. We can swing by, maybe pick up some of the stuff from your office, to maybe facilitate some of the equipment.
Well, are you gonna arrange to have Brad set up, or you just want the selectmen to set up?
Um, I don't know, what, how do you feel? Do you want, do you want their assistance? 'Cause usually, I know that the school has to do it later. So that worked with your schedule, and I think it worked for the few that were available. And it helped the school, because the school have, has the kids...
That school program or something. There's really no reason to hire anybody else to come in if you guys can be available. And I, I can go down to help. Gary, if he does work that day, will have to stay here till five o'clock, because we have to be available for absentee ballots until five P.M. the day before.
So Tuesday's school will be closed, too?
I didn't even look at their calendar. If they do have classes, normally what they do is they, they section off the gym, they'll pull that curtain halfway across.
Oh, so they'll still have their lunches there and whatnot?
They'll still have their lunches. And that will have some impact on the food coming in as well, you know, the use of the kitchen. And we don't wanna get underfoot with the folks in the kitchen at the school.
Okay, we'll set a little table off to, behind it, off to the side for...
I think we'll be able to time it, so that they'll be done their lunch, and then we can bring our food in.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
And who's gonna plan for the social hall?
Yeah.
That'll be good.
I think that's about it in a nutshell.
So four thirty on the 5th?
Four thirty on the 5th.
Okay, that's when we're doing it, four thirty? That's when we'll set up.
Yeah, that's a month, that's a...
Monday.
That's a month.
Four thirty, after school, we'll still be going, won't we?
After school program, they're, they're just rubbed down by then, that's why.
They, they have the kids... They're upstairs.
They do, yeah.
So they'll be, they'll be out of the way.
And the teachers aides or whoever, staff there, as soon as they, they came in, they thought we were coming in, they just scooted all the children upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would scoot them right over to hell. The good news is we...
Carry this.
We've dealt with them often enough, that everyone knows the drill, and it seems to work going on.
Yeah.
Well, 'cause they're not, won't scuttle anybody, any employees to help them, so...
I would say if, if only if someone falls ill, we can, we'll call it as we see it.
And since it's pretty much, I know it's the first election for you, isn't it maybe the second one for you? Like, your old pad, you had forty-four of them.
Yeah.
Renee signed me up to break down on the last election, so...
And, and this, this is new to Renee as well, so...
Oh, it is?
Well, I mean...
Relatively.
Relatively new.
So we'll lean on Linda.
I know, I'm so used to leaning on Fred.
And Renee, I just wanna make sure you are...
Funny, I don't feel a move at it anymore.
Since I have you here, you, the selectmen met last week, and we decided not to ratify, and because we felt you were well within your legal parameters to exercise the postponement as you did.
Yeah.
And so we, we support you, but that's one step we didn't think we had to pursue.
And Fred was here at that meeting, he supported your actions as well, so... That's very nice. I thought the decision that we came to was reasoned and thoughtful, and I felt good about it. I'm sure glad we didn't move our elections, 'cause even though they just got their hands slapped, it seemed like it was a lot bigger deal for those towns.
Who moved the elections?
Yeah.
To move town meeting is a no-brainer. As you're, you can do it up to, I think, two hours prior?
Yeah.
And so you were well within your...
Yeah, no, we, we did it, we did it according to oil. The one thing about the, having a hearing to ratify the actions taken during town meeting is really that it covers the town. So nobody can come back upon... Yeah. And what we decided was nobody had come up and mentioned even anything about any of those, and there weren't that many...
Real bonds.
No bonds, and there was, there weren't even any issues that were that conservative, you know, controversial stuff. Yep, yep. It's your call. From my point of view, the prudent thing would be to just have the hearing.
And you...
So let the public come in and tell you that. But you've already decided.
Yeah.
Well, like Bob, you might open up a whole nother can of worms.
It opens a whole different can of worms, 'cause the people that might have been opposed would probably be the people that would show up to challenge ratification. And where it was, it wasn't mandatory that we do this, it's better that the legislative body spoke on that Saturday, and all you're gonna get now is opposition that could probably show up. So it wasn't worth opening that can of worms.
Your call.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know that we support the actions that were, the occurrences, and that was, I think was done appropriately, yeah.
They did, I watched them.
And then Fred may have, Fred may have mentioned that, you know, if the meeting had run too late, it would have been under the same, you know, precedent that you moved it to the Saturday anyway to finish the meeting, so...
That has been done in the town.
Which has been done in the past.
So...
The important thing was that we held the election, because I just came from a workshop yesterday, and they discussed that, the towns who had postponed their election. So everybody who voted on that paper ballot, that paper ballot has the date of the election, so for... So you know those towns did not reprint all of those bajillion ballots, so people were voting on a ballot.
They took a wrong date on it.
It's got the wrong date on it.
It's another little fact I didn't even think of.
And Renee, I had read that and didn't think we needed any action the way we did it, and having that second, you know, opinion from you and rereading it was good, good to read through, you know, because you could see how you could look at it from two ways.
Yeah.
You know, put it to bed type of, type of thing, so it was good to read through it again.
Okay, so we are...
Good with elections?
Yeah, we're done with elections.
Okay.
We'll see you in June for sure.
Yeah. Thank you. And in July?
In July, we'll have another, we'll have another exercise.
Yeah. Thank you guys for coming in. Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
I've got more stuff for them.
Okay.
The petition and poll licenses. I've never had to explain them before, 'cause everybody knew what they were, so...
Bob said I had to say this.
Right, so there are the three copies.
She doesn't get it, though.
What?
Inside, a little bit of your book, I was trying to make this sound.
This was the cover letter that came with it. I don't think I sent that along to you, but this is just the standard that happens when we have a new poll going up, or being...
And I understand the town road agent R. is already basically...
Jeff has already seen it. The poll's already up, and I, I know, I saw them when I drove down Twist Hill Road last week. I saw the poll laying on the side of the road, and I thought, I guess I'm gonna get a new poll license in there.
I think you'll get more, because they're all over the place. They're on Montalona, they're on Morse Road.
What's the address?
We see one on Morse.
So if we didn't approve this, do they take the poll down?
It's a good question. It's an agreement, I guess it's not really an approval, it's an agreement.
Which one do you sign?
I, I'm...
It doesn't matter, as long as you sign it. There's a section for five or six signatures under selectmen.
Yeah, I see that.
And I'm assuming that's to cover cities that have, you know, the big... They're just big lots of spaces.
How many are there, three?
There are three of them.
It's the same, three copies of the same.
It's got a sketch on the back and a little point. And so it's already up, though. That's interesting.
Which Jeff said.
There are still ones laying down, though.
Yeah, we'll be getting more.
But can it carry fiber?
I think that's what their goal is.
Did you want the, did you want the Sundays?
Yeah.
Well, it's okay. You sent something on email, I saw it earlier.
Right, I, because I was, I know you had seen at least one, I know Bob might have seen one, I know Dave hadn't seen any, so I thought this would be a good time to just tell you folks what the process is. And I know this wasn't on the agenda, but I thought of it today, I'm like, ah, should've asked, it's, it's not a huge night. I'll give you a little history. When I started working as deputy with Irene, whenever she needed to make change, when somebody paid cash, she took out this little box, probably used to have cards in it or something, 'cause that was her cash box. She'd make change out of that. And so when I became clerk, she reached over to the box and she pulled the twenty dollars out, and she says, "You're gonna have to put your own money in there." So here, for all the years Irene was clerk, she made change out of her own twenty-dollar bill that, or twenty dollars that she left here for change. So after being clerk a little bit, I realized twenty dollars wasn't gonna cut it, so I took my twenty, and I went to the board and I said, "Give me fifty dollars to just make change with, for people who pay cash." So I got my fifty, and then sometimes people really hit me with cash, and you can't make change out of fifty when somebody's handing you hundred-dollar bills. So I phoned the board a few years ago and said, "Can I just have another hundred for change? I'm getting hit with hundred-dollar bills again, and I've come to you. Renee, can you change a hundred? Judy, can you change a hundred?" And I asked the board to just bring my petty cash up to, from one fifty to two fifty, and maybe next week or whenever, cut a check so that I can turn it into change, so I can make change. It's part of my change, part of my change has to be coined. So a roll of quarters automatically chews up ten dollars, it already, no, that's a lot.
I'm sure if Pam's okay with it, the auditor happens to be coming in in a week, so I'll just ask him as well, and I don't think it's an issue, but...
I mean, it shouldn't be, I mean, I, I need to make change, so... And I have in the past, where maybe you haven't been here, Judy hasn't been here, gone, and said, "Okay, what do I have in my purse?" And then the auditor had once said, "Don't ever make change out of your own money." So I don't wanna turn anybody away. And the only way I can make change sometimes is...
And we don't have a store nearby.
We have just an ATM nearby that is always reliable.
Yeah.
Yep. So what do you have now, currently, hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty is what it currently has.
And you look and bring it up to two fifty?
To two fifty.
Okay.
You wanna make a motion?
Um, I don't think that.
Or do you wanna wait till after we are?
If, if the consensus of vote is still, if it's allowable, then, then I don't think it's gonna be an issue. I think if anyone might be the treasurer.
It's, it's, it's administration, really, it's not the organization.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
That's. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, very welcome.
Thank you, woman.
Harry?
Thanks.
Okay, um, another thing was on the email, and we also have a hard copy here, was, we're gonna talk about the planning board, Circuit Rider. And uh, when I saw Circuit Rider, I could think of, I was thinking motorcycles, but. But it wasn't, it's essentially, uh, it's an opportunity to um, bring in some professional help to review our zoning ordinance.
I, I did not make it, I just sent it to you in an email.
I saw the email, I read it.
It's an opportunity to uh, have some professional assistance in, in refining our zoning ordinance. And uh, I think it's a good opportunity, uh, to, but the thing is, it's, it's not free. I believe there's a cost to it.
Yeah.
And uh, but I think they, they have a budget within the zoning board and in the uh, planning board.
For planning consultant.
Right. And so I think is uh, I'd say uh, it's a, it's a start. I think we should entertain that idea.
And the, the ultimate goal by hiring these individuals is that they're going to set up our zoning ordinance so that all the little glitches that we're currently having with the document will be in a template format that we can either add in the future, hopefully, doesn't get corrupt, and then they will also obtain a copy, so if it's something that's given to them, just input it. It, it, we can use it two ways, and um, it, it'll be a document that we own, but they have done our site plan review regs, our um, subdivision regs in the past.
Do they, have they done any work with other municipalities?
That's all they do.
Okay.
That's all they do. And then what, what this would really be is um, have Steve be the administrator to this individual, work side by side, and he will show them techniques, hopefully, that will enhance his uh, ability to understand and know the process for making changes and other things, so.
So it's.
There's two, actually, two, two functions there. It's one to um, update our zoning ordinance one hundred percent, and then, um, and then that means also following, or double checking any of the past zoning amendments, make sure that we have everything in the document accurately. And then following, going forward with um, plan review for uh, site plan review and um, subdivision review, which a lot of towns, smaller towns like ours, if they don't have an individual in, that's a planner, um, they would sub that service out. So at an hourly rate, as needed, they will work side by side with Steve so that he can learn the, the whole process from start to finish, is what, as to what's expected.
Is uh, Steve's system up to date enough that he'll be able to do all the things he needs to do with his computer system?
He has a brand-new computer. I think, I think it's, it's educating him on the proper procedures so that he's prepared um, and does things in a timely fashion, so I'm hoping that.
Yeah, he obviously needs help to, to do it, and we've talked about it, and this is gonna give him a little bit of help, yeah.
Well, they have the monies there, and it does give, uh, you've got someone that's more familiar with the whole process.
Right.
Working with someone that's probably a little less familiar, that may be able to uh, encourage them, motivate them, you know?
Yeah, because unfortunately, right now, the go-to person is myself, or the planning board chairman and the co-chair, um, or the secretary of these different boards, and they're all volunteers, and he is here forty hours a week, so rather than uh, not have any guidance for him to be able to start, uh, you know, a regular procedure of how to handle these things.
Well, not just that, I think, having the correct information sometimes, you know, because you, you're taking away other people's viewpoints, because you can read certain things certain ways, so it might help in that regard as well.
Yeah.
Are these people gonna be on call for, so you're talking, the consultants?
Yep, for the site, yep, for site plan review, and we have two pending uh, projects coming. One is the site plan review, and the other, no, actually, they're both site plan review, so um.
Is it, is it one, is it, is it per, per hour fee, or?
Yes, it's fifty dollars an hour, and capped at two thousand dollars for twenty seventeen.
That's for the zoning ordinance.
And it's sixty-five dollars an hour for the other one, and no cap on them.
Right, so if we happen to get really busy, and we have a complicated uh, project like Overlook, for example, there would be somebody there to go through the whole process of monitoring and making recommendations, and hopefully giving the tools that.
I think it's a, I think it's a win, I think.
Is it fifty or sixty-five again?
Sixty-five for site plan review and fifty for the zoning board.
With a cap on zoning of two thousand dollars. And it's, they're already budgeted for it, so I think it's uh,
Yeah.
we have to uh, basically, it's uh, I think we just have to come to a consensus, no votes on it.
I think uh, I'm in agreement.
I agree.
Okay, so.
All right.
Go forward. God bless you, but there's no vote, we don't require a vote on that one.
Yep.
All right, continuing on. Other bit, um, let's go for other business now. I wanna talk about the uh, the roof shingles that are falling. Now, oh, before we get there. I've got a request, we've got a mailbox, I've got a request from the uh, four H to have a plant sale on the common June third, eight to twelve. This is four H Club, they have a plant sale.
What was the date on that again?
June third, Saturday. And four H would like to do a plant sale on the common. Wish they gave some more additional particulars as far as how many, how many people we're talking about.
I, I don't, I, to be honest, I don't see a problem with that.
Oh, I, likewise.
In the past, the four H had regular meetings here in this meeting room.
Okay.
And as we've evolved with the committees and other groups, they've kind of forced them into the church, um.
Okay.
So they've always been involved and use and utilize the town buildings and whatnot for their.
I don't have an issue with it either. And Liam says, not gonna be on the same date as we're having the Dunbar and ours in the common.
Really, they could, they could have benefited from that though.
Which I'm seeing on channel nine all the time now.
It's this weekend.
Yeah.
It's always planned it for the weekend, it's gonna rain on August day.
Right, so.
You might wanna start changing the weekends.
It is not a long period, two eight AM to noon, so you all agree on that?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't circle a consensus, but yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I have appointment here, uh, appoint the uh, basically Michael Cummings as a health officer.
Um, so basically, Mike and I, Michael Cummings and I met today to review, review his budget and his duties of the job. Uh, he mentioned that he'd come across the document of health officer that had a prior building inspector's name on it. Uh, he said he was familiar with his training that he'd just recently gone through, that it's common for uh, the health officer and building inspector to hold both titles, because they kind of work together with um, building codes and people's health and safety and whatnot. Um, when I contacted the state, he offered to send me uh, the form for appointment, and um, I'm recommending that to the board that we appoint Mike Cummings as acting health officer for the town of Dunbar, and by signing the state appointment form, and then I'd like to send him to uh, the New Hampshire Health Officers Association workshop, which is part of the membership dues.
Jenny, can I motion on this on the floor? I think we should vote on this, this is a voting motion.
Yeah.
Let me get it back in my hands after she's done.
We'll discuss it.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we appoint Michael Cummings the health and deputy health officer uh, for the town of Dunbar.
As just the, just the health officer, we're not the deputy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a good motion. You know, I'm familiar that it's generally run as this, as, you know, take care of by the building inspector typically in this town.
A lot of the issues, uh, we concerned health or receptics and building, building instruction and that, and so I.
Mold and all that stuff, it all falls under that anymore.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, I wanna talk about, uh, before we talk about general maintenance issues, I wanna bring up the um, the school construction agreement. And uh, we all received an email. Bob, before you arrived on the board, Bob and I met, we just talked to them, uh, we didn't, they requested an appointment with the town, with the town engineer. We sat, why they, uh, we sat in that meeting, why they met with the town engineer, and uh, all of a sudden, everything went quiet. They, they tried to bill us for another ten thousand dollars, and Leen sent, as town administrator, she sent the documents, which basically was the contract, and some of the accountings of the, what payments have been made, and we have deafening silence from the company.
Because we, we didn't have ten thousand left that we owned, it was like five thousand. And I seen their request for ten thousand. And it looked like they sent it by email, they didn't even send us an official invoice?
No, they sent it with an attachment on an email.
On an email.
And that's when I responded with the information I had.
And she responded to the person and to the bookkeeper there, to two people within the organization.
Yeah.
And we haven't, we've had deafening silence. And then, just recently, she sent something to them that we were talking about it tonight, and we asked in a nice way if we could have any updates, and deafening silence.
Now, that was the issue where Cohen Steel had to refabricate the steel beam.
That's correct.
Had that all been done?
No.
No, because this last meeting with our engineer, um, Cohen Steel agreed to work with Score Construction to take the steel back after they did um.
Templates.
True templates of each, and then they said they would redesign them, and so right now.
And who was gonna do the template, Score, or?
Score would have to do the templates.
Yeah.
Um, and that's typical of this type of work, is that you should do that, but they didn't do that.
Right.
Score, uh, Cohen Steel was willing to get an estimate and look at the plans, but you still, even their quote always says that you have to have, what is it called, Bob, when you go there, an actual?
Field measurement.
Field, yes, you said that, yeah. Field measurement, and it didn't happen. So they basically gave the plans to Cohen Steel, and they came up with a, a quote, and there was never a field measurement done, so. The steel is not bent.
And what date was that, that you guys had that meeting, and they, it was?
Um, if you look at the.
They met with the engineer in March thirty-first of this year.
Yeah.
April, and now we're in the middle of May, so month, month and a half that we haven't.
I mean, Cohen Steel came also, but then he.
Was it Peter Webster?
Yeah, and then everyone up, everyone went into the library, and then Peter came back here and said, it's between you and these guys. I think I've, I've agreed to do whatever I need to help you guys, but um, it, he didn't need to be here to.
And since that date, we haven't heard one thing from Score about coming up to?
Just their email response wanting more money. And that's when I sent them straight with all the attachments that I sent them.
Yeah.
So the only thing we've kept from, from the uh, original contract, we've kept back five thousand dollars out of the total bill was twenty.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, so they received twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, which in their letter, they said to hold back nine thousand dollars. They asked for ten to hold back nine, so they obviously forgot they got a middle payment there or something.
I don't know what, what it is, but uh, uh, the agreement was written that they had to get a deposit upon agreement, on the agreement. So that's what we did, is we sent them, the, the base ten thousand dollars for the agreement, and then they sent us a, another one after.
They obviously missed one part of that bookkeeping.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they wanted another ten thousand dollar payment, and they said that would leave nine thousand dollar balance.
Yeah.
And um, at that meeting, nobody gave any idea of that beam work, what it would cost, Peter, Cohen, or anybody else. Peter was gonna help the town out, in other words.
Yeah.
The steel is still usable, and has to be removed, and be removed, and then they would refabricate it.
So do you think we should send a certified letter to Score to ask him to come in and meet with us and give us an update on it?
I think it's beyond that.
Why?
I think it's time for uh, to consider us in legal action, I guess, and.
Well, it's only a month and a half, and we, we've only contacted them after they contacted us.
But the thing is, they have not responded at all to us. We can, we can ask them again.
First of all, they ended up for the meeting with our engineer to redesign it.
And, and I, and I can understand that they were probably concerned, because the person that bid the job, that we got a fixed number from, didn't realize how much, how labor-intensive all those penetrations were. This isn't about weakening the uh, the wood structure, it's about the amount of time it would take. I, I don't know if you've gone to look at the penetrations.
I haven't, I might just mention today, so.
Yeah, there's, uh, the, everyone has, a lot of, so they were looking for a quicker way to do it, I believe. And I don't know what Joel gave them for the uh.
He's reduced the, I think, the penetrations, but, yeah, not, not a hundred percent, but it, just enough so that it's staggered rather than three in a row continuously.
But I still think that there's a lot of work there. And they, number one is they gotta fish the steel that's up in the attic, and then the steel that's on the floor, and get it down and over to Cohen Steel, and there's a cost, so. I think they're overwhelmed with the amount of money, and the person that figured the job is no longer with the company.
With Score.
Right.
And I was thinking, you know, the way that, you know, maybe at least notify them that we're looking to do something is at least send one legal certified mail to their office, you know, asking us to give, to give us an update on what their plan is and schedule, and if we hear nothing back from them, then maybe even in a week's time, we'll move on to some sort of.
Yeah, that's, that sounds.
And the other thing we could do, while we determine there's enough money there, is hire another company to actually do the work and deduct it from theirs, and then we'll be.
Well, there's not enough money there to do that. No, because you owe Cohen Steel the money to rehold it back.
Yeah.
They haven't got paid for the steel yet.
They haven't?
No.
Yeah, that was a, that was an order placed by Score.
And he hasn't even paid them yet?
No, because they had contacted me, asking how the, the project is moving forward, because they still have an outstanding invoice for that material.
Oh, wow.
So it's quite.
I didn't realize Cohen didn't get paid for their work, I don't think.
So I think that we have to look at a uh, drop dead date of a response, because maybe just a day wasn't, you know, enough time. Uh, I think next week, we should be talking about whether or not we go to the attorney.
Sure.
Because in the end, they're responsible for that work being done.
Actually, before we send them a letter, why don't we check with, uh, I know we're not supposed to check with our town attorney, but somebody in his office, and ask him what legal step they think we should take, because it's been a month and a half since you guys have met.
Right, and others, does it make sense, does a certified letter make sense in the scheme of things?
Right.
If we're gonna pursue legal action at the end.
Yeah, it might be a cheap way of doing it too, if I go, but.
You know, ju, so that we don't just send a certified letter, then they say, oh, you shouldn't have done that, you should have done this, okay, so.
Yeah.
That way, then we know we're taking at least the right legal steps to, you know, to ask them to come forth and work.
And just from recent experience, I sent a certified letter to my granddaughter down in DC for her birthday, and what should have taken like three days, took like over a week. So I'd hate to send a certified letter with a short amount of time, and with them not even receiving it.
No, no, I think you'd have to leave them a week or two at, at least.
Right.
To respond.
So check with town attorney, saying that we're thinking about pursuing legal action here, but would a certified letter?
Be the appropriate first step.
Yeah.
Because, you know, not hearing from them doesn't mean that they're not scheduling anything, we just don't know what they're doing.
Right.
So we're gonna, we're giving them benefit of the doubt?
Yeah, we're giving them the benefit of the doubt. Most likely, they aren't doing anything at all, because like Bob said, they realize they're in the rear for this now, but.
I, well, you saw their faces when they looked at all the penetrations.
Oh, I, I mean.
This wasn't about whether or not it was cost-effective, it's, it was labor-intensive.
Now, um, if our meeting gets out early enough, could one of you guys show me that?
Yeah.
Can you walk up there, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Can we get into the building?
Yep, we have the keys.
All right.
It's uh.
I'd like to see it firsthand, so I know what we're looking at too, so.
The, the issue was, if we do have to go out to rebid, it's gonna cost uh, significantly more than what we have in retainer, and so that's why I, we need to recover something from these people, so we can go out to bid.
Well, it may not, may not happen if they determine that they've.
Well, and number one is, that's the contract they signed with us to do that work.
Yeah.
And you may find that we'll be able, we'd have to go to court, but we may find that we'll get someone to do the work at their expense.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I'm thinking too.
Even if it comes, even if it comes full circle, where we have to get the work done, and, you know, we still.
I, I, I think the bottom line, we have to get the work done eventually, sooner than later, because the thing is, the engineer said, you know, a hundred years ago was, was fine, but today's engineering standards, it does not meet standards. And the thing is, hate to have the heavy snow load and then have it collapse, and then where, where are we then?
Yeah, they changed snow loads a few years, because they did have buildings collapse, and they've increased them.
Yeah.
And they've changed how the drift loading is on that.
And so that's, that's, the engineer was, was, was smiling, because he was saying, no, it's, it was fine back then, but now you gotta take the high road and go by the new construction holes. Okay, so it's working, work in progress, we just keep.
So if we get an update from the town attorney next week, we can try and either set up to do the certified letter or whatnot.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's good.
So, before we put it, but Lena, I guess if they tell you that, you know, a certified letter to them would be good, if you wanna draft something for us to review at the meeting next week.
Yeah.
And we can maybe add words or take them out, or say, yeah, we like them.
I'll send it to you before, so you can make a decision next week.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
Just wanna get that moving on, I came on, I think it's uh, that was.
I didn't realize it wasn't taken care of.
Oh, yeah. It's been a, I, I never realized how, it's, it's just sitting there. And just to get the steel down from that, it's gonna take ten men to carry that steel down, and it's gonna take hours and hours.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and again, and you saw their faces, they talked about the amount of labor that was gonna be involved. But in, first, they talked about weakening, you know, the structure, but they don't penetrate that far. And it was more about labor than it was anything else.
Okay, uh, we'll continue on, the mailbox here, we have, okay. Let's talk about maintenance, maintenance schedule. Um, we have a few projects I wanna get bids on and get going. This is the time of the year. Um, we put, we put money in the budget for our home, so we want for our ties and.
Can I just bring to your attention a few things that I think need to be addressed a little bit sooner than later?
That's what we want.
Um, we'll start as the air conditioner, that was something that we tried to um-
Which page are you on, are you on the-
Actually.
Yeah, so where are we on?
That is the budget worksheet that everyone came before the selectmen with a wish list of items that we've tried to attempt to budget and get quotes on.
So which section are we under?
Right now, uh, the top section, library.
Okay, yep.
Okay, it says raise air conditioner five hundred dollars.
Yes, okay.
Okay, it never came to fruition, we got a quote, we had someone lined up to do it, they just got too busy during the season.
They were raising it inside that building there?
No, there's a, on that, no, it's, uh, south side, there's a, what is it, on the, on the ground, Bob?
Right, there's a, there's a, you have, so on the ground.
Exterior unit that has wall mounts on the inside of the library. And they, they, when library, uh, library trustees will walk in with one of the selectmen's reps to inspect the building, um, they noticed that there was a lot of leaves, debris, grass growing, and other things that would probably shorten the life of the air conditioner if we didn't take care of getting it up off the ground.
So the exterior unit.
It's an exterior unit, ground unit, but it, it's difficult to keep things out of the vents that could cause it to overheat and whatnot.
And uh, so it's not on a platform like they normally are?
Correct, right, it's right on the ground.
And so the five hundred dollars is a budget that was put in there to cover?
Yeah.
So we'll get an estimate on doing it?
Yeah, we had in the past, and I, again, if you wanna move forward and, and go with the same type of uh, getting quotes to, to create some kind of a structure to raise it, we also have to have someone disconnect the air conditioner. I guess Bob said it was capping it and then reconnecting it.
They cut, cap it and move it out of the way, and then they have to reinstall it.
Right, and so I did reach out to Steve Don, cause uh, four, five years ago, he, his company was the company that um, through our budgeting process was awarded the, the bid to install it. But the way it was installed, it was directly on the ground.
And who's maintaining them now, like a freon ever need to be added to the system or?
Um, I'll typically call around as he was available and I know that um-
So we don't have somebody regular that we use for the town buildings?
No, no, I think with uh, Tom Cassano is in the business of air conditioning a lot and install, so he has a a plumber that we've been able to reach out to, um.
Cause uh, when they cap that or disconnect it, they'll have to-
Recharge it.
Yeah, recharge it.
They'll have to capture that material, you can't reuse it and then recharge the entire system, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a, what, that's a full service call.
It is, it's a, it might not be covered by the five hundred dollars because the freon is, they don't call it freon anymore, there's a number for-
R twenty-one.
R twelve or something like that and so.
So I, so I've asked for a quote for that.
Okay.
I basically asked um, Tiffany to reach out to him, see if he could do that because he's familiar with the unit, he installed it. Then he might be, would give us a price of what it costs for us to take care of that.
Yeah, that's a good one to get going.
You know, I, I was only, I was concerned that, you know, we, we have laypeople saying it has to come up off the ground, does it really have to come off the ground? I mean, obviously, well, it wasn't installed incorrectly from the get-go. Because you know, you, you figure like, they have a generator, where, where they put a generator, they put it on a pad.
I think a lot of times, they just put those on patio blocks, even though they do move the ground.
Right, but I think this is just plain on, is on the ground per se, and it's not even on anyone.
No, no, it's not on anything, it's on, it's on some crushed stone that has weeds growing out of it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's-
So the purpose is to keep the weeds from going into it, then?
Yeah, and make it easy to either, you know, get a leaf blower to get the stuff out of there, but not damage the unit itself.
Okay.
We'll look at that a lot too.
Well, I was gonna say that, you know, if you could find a reasonable price to disconnect it, like I said, I have two three inch, twenty-three and a half by twenty-three and a half, have two of them, that are those, uh, two and a half inches thick. That look like the bark mulch that you put down, the kinda reddish colored, that you could put on that side. If we could schedule to be there the same day that they're disconnecting it.
Yeah.
We'll get some crushed stone from the uh, highway department, put some crushed stone down, level it, and put that down. And that gives you plenty of space between the weeds and everything, cause you got six inches on each side, I think four inches front and back.
Yeah.
You know, and you're gonna have crushed stone and make sure we take most of that soil out, so it's mostly stone, you know?
Yeah.
So, so the, the biggest thing is just a disconnect and recharge, a, a complete recharge and a service call on it.
Yeah.
Before relocating that, but the thing is, it still kills me when I, I mean, why did they put on a pad to start with?
A lot of companies do whole key things.
I know, and, and to me it was, I don't wanna say anything bad about the company, but the thing is-
Well, well, number one is, you probably got a price to put in the air conditioning from a person who's an electrician that does that.
Yeah.
And you don't have anyone that put a pad down to begin with, but that was the logical place to put it.
Yeah. Okay, Lena, that was your first one, what's your second one?
Yeah, the other one that I think needs to be addressed is uh, this town office building, the roof shingles have been picked up off the ground, so we're now up to almost, I want eight to ten full-size shingles and it appears to be on the ridge cap that was installed, um, a little over five, maybe closer to ten years.
Looks like the adhesive glue isn't working on the cap shingles.
These, these the water leaks you're talking about right here?
I'm not sure, I, there was one planning board meeting, the planning board was here and it was literally dripping and they thought maybe it was a vent on the outside letting snow in.
Right.
That might have, you know, now started, gotten, gotten heated up and then started melting, but now that's, winter's behind us, all the shingles on the ground are saying, you know, painting a different story, so um-
Lena, I think we should get that done right away, is there any way we can get one more estimate on it or?
Uh, I'm sure I can, I don't have any other knowledge of other roofers, but I, in your business, do you know roofers? Can you give me some names? That would be great.
If we get, if we get at least just one more estimate on it, I'd, I'd have to get through this.
Yeah, and I think I would like to do the same is to-
The proposal was um, to do the full job, but just to roof, the roof?
I think just the uh-
Well, you don't need to mention the number, the amount, so that if someone watches the video of that.
And I think, I think them shingles are laying pretty flat on the main building and the cap was obviously replaced. And there was a period when those shingles, the glue between them didn't work, so they're not stuck down and that's why that cap's flying off and I don't see any problem with the rest of the shingles up there, in fact, if they do the work and they inspect it, maybe we can check them, but they look flat up there to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
If a shingle is flat and not curled and buckled and cracking-
And we walked around the back, so all we saw in the back was small sections of that um-
The cap.
The moss growing on the back corner where the tree used to shade the building.
Oh, and remind me Lena, I think maybe that, putting the zinc up there on the backside to alleviate that moss would be a good idea.
Okay, that was number two, number three, what's the next one?
Um, the other item, uh, it's there's been a lot of concern about the town hall, library, and the front of our building here that the lower, at least the lower section of the buildings uh, are in desperate need of a, a paint.
Yeah, I see the lower half on the library, right?
That's a, that's a, that's a, absolutely, there's bare wood on the library exposed now.
And we have a few strips in the front here as well as bare wood.
Now uh, just my own thoughts on it, I would rather see us either paint the whole thing or a side at a time than paint the lower half and leave the upper half. Because that building, you know, there's thousands of shades of white, and even though you're gonna try and match that um, by painting the lower half and not the top half, it's gonna start looking like patchwork, so I'd rather, if we don't have enough money in the budget, maybe do a side or two this year, and next year do another side or two, but not to do the building in halves like, you know, lower and upper. So at least a side, a side a year.
So I think because of the cost involved, if you're looking at the three areas that we budgeted paint jobs, there is some money there, I don't know if you need it, if you want it.
So we're looking at the library, one was two, right?
Yeah, that's what we had budgeted.
And then we have three down on the town.
Yes.
Yep, exterior paint, and then um-
Two in the fire department.
Two in the fire department, police department, I think they had some minor painting on their wish list and-
Highway department also paint, with every pair in paint.
Correct, but we have kind of encumbered some of that for this proposed lighting project, if we get that um, grant, so that's gonna eat up a lot of-
We did their garage doors already, right?
No, that was actually an emergency repair.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so um-
So we're talking about seven thousand dollars just as a starting point?
Um, I think we've seen some in the, let's see, paint, let's see, I don't know, so, no, paint, I guess I can't spell, but paint, back, packer building and recycling, there's a thousand dollars in the transfer station.
Okay, yeah.
That's eight thousand.
Now, do we have any good local painters in, I don't know?
Not that, not that I'm aware of, we had some back in the day, but-
The only one that I was aware of ever was a, like a commercial painter was Mike down here on Rogers Road just below the but uh, I can't think of Mike's last name now.
Doesn't do it.
He's retired now.
I thought there was somebody on Range Way at some point, but they don't do a painting any time. Maybe it was a carpenter I was thinking.
Dennis?
I'm sure.
Langley, I think, he does carpeting, right?
It's gotta be Manchester Gostam painters, I'm painting companies, this is one we probably wanna quote for uh, economy of scale. I'd probably, I'd probably ask them to quote out the, the library, size of the library, the entire library, the library and the town hall in one, in one, in one pot, make some proposals.
Well, I don't think with this budget, you're gonna be looking at both buildings, you better just stick to one building and decide which one we'd rather do this year.
Yeah.
Well-
Cause uh, with that kind of money, you're not gonna do-
How much you, how much you, how much you, would you, how much you estimate when you say?
I hate to throw any numbers out there, but a building that size is gonna be, yeah.
Don't say it, write it down for me. He's a public business.
Lot of zeros there.
On that size building.
Okay, alright.
That's what I'm thinking.
For one side?
No, the whole building.
Oh yeah, okay, well, I've got a whole big work-
Preparing the woodwork.
Yeah, there is, there is some repair that needs to be done this way.
So I think um, maybe we'll get some estimates started on that.
Yeah.
But I will try and see if I can come up with some ideas, if painters are one of the hardest subcontractors to get. There's very few of them doing it now, um, for building that size and to have the OSHA approved staging set up to do it.
Or a little tunnel.
Yeah, he's, I think he's expensive, but he does a really good job, and he is local.
Okay. You hit the nail on the head, you hit the nail on the head earlier, if you do one side at a time. So if you, you could actually do this in one side of the library, the worst side, you know, to get started on that and get one out of the way, you know?
Cause there are, you know, there are gonna be sides on almost every building, one or two sides because of the sun and where the north, they'd take it harder. And so, you know, a side or two on each of the buildings might be something, but-
That's the way I've always painted my homes.
Yeah.
One wall every year, and then I never had a problem with it, you know?
It's a little easier to swallow.
It's way easier to swallow that way, it does work for me, less work to pay.
So Lena, if we can find a couple of good contractors, maybe we'll get them to price out both buildings, but on separate, and then, you know, make sure that they'd be willing to do maybe um, sides of the buildings, you know, we might do two sides on that, two sides on this or something, but-
Okay, and I, I definitely, I'm familiar with tunnel.
He's down in Gostam still?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's right down the street.
Is he down over here?
Yeah, he's working right next door.
Oh yeah, you're right, he is working.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's why I thought of him.
Yeah, okay, I'll reach out to him, um, obviously, if it comes in, if it comes in above ten, then we have to put it out to bid.
Yes.
So if I get a quote, then it's-
So that's another reason we'll have the separate buildings too, because-
Yeah.
We may want, as I think piecemeal may be the, a more economical way to, but then again, if-
The, the thing is, you can pick the worst to do anyway, see, so if you say, you wanna do the whole building, but this wall's really bad, you could say, well, we can get away with three, you can get this wall done this year, get something done, you know what I'm saying?
Right, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna see the lower half done, yeah.
No, one wall.
Yeah.
You're attacking, you're attacking the worst to do as you go, you know, versus trying to do everything at once or, you know what I'm saying? If you do all of that and let this rot.
Yeah, we're getting further behind.
Like it's cheaper to just do, like I said, a couple of, a wall here, a wall there, or whatever else you got squeezed. The rest of your budget finished on some other little piece, you know?
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that many years ago, we didn't attack an entire building and then go to that same approach now, which would have been easier to maintain and
Right.
to wait, you know, for the, for it to be problematic with everybody's buildings. And, you know, cause it, it makes it difficult to try to catch up. But unfortunately, you only have so many dollars to work with.
Yeah.
So it's like asking a guy, give us a price on these buildings, but can you pick the worst side and start with that one, if that's the way we're gonna go, you know?
Okay, so you're gonna get some names, Lena, additional painters?
Yeah, I'll try to get some.
Oh, you, I'll send, I'll send you a reminder, any roofer names?
Yeah, roofer, roofer painters.
I mean, Yellow Page as well for-
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anything, anything else on that list that you can, everyone can look on the list if there's anything else hot?
We have a standard and I have a small budget in here for cleaning the carpets. Again, I think it's important, these are fairly new carpets, the carpet company does a good job, I'd like to try to keep up on it. Um, so on the town office, I typically budget five hundred and fifty dollars and I'll do one in after the spring weather, which would be this time of the year, and then one more before uh, winter hits. So I'd like to, okay, just move forward and get that car, carpet cleaning scheduled.
I have no issue with that.
It's usually, it's less than three hundred dollars, somewhere in that range, but-
Per, per, per?
Per cleaning, yeah, I think in the past-
I don't have any trouble with that.
Yeah, so that might be just a small chunk, maybe he'll match last year's price, which was two hundred and seventy-five.
I see bark mulch town commons that being addressed with the checks we just paid, or that was just lawn maintenance, I think, and leaf pickup?
That was lawn and leaf, I know that the uh, garden club typically does a volunteer weekend and they'll beautify the weekend.
The RV guy.
Yeah, they did it last weekend. But they didn't need any-
They did it for the weekend, didn't they?
That was just a touch-up for this, they're coming back after.
Yeah, they usually do the bark mulch, I mean, we pay for it, they do all the labor, we just, you know-
Which is, I think, a pretty fair price.
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you, can you tell me on Concord Fire Monitoring up at the library?
Mm-hmm.
What is that about?
That is um, the fire monitoring system that we have a, have installed there and there's annual monitoring so that if there should be a fire, it's communicated to a, a live company that can get uh, calls to the fire department quicker than just an alarm going off. And I did notice that, I think I have it noted somewhere else in here too, so-
Now, why is that on the building maintenance improvement list?
The selectmen's, a couple of years back, decided that rather than have all these different similar services in everybody's budget, let's put them all together in our budget, so we have control, um, have the ability to either get a package deal or um, be able to just regulate it, so that theirs, their budget doesn't, you know, they don't come up with just a number because you know, they want a certain item, but these are really just building maintenance items.
Okay.
So we could have moved all those items under the, this account.
Can I just go down through a couple of these quickly?
Sure, yeah.
Did you have any repair on this building, was that ever done?
No, and that's where um, I think they might have just done a temporary fix, but we haven't seen any problems or um, I think, I'd have to, I'd have to look back at minutes to find out why they went up there and that was a, a high number, we got a quote on, so I'm not exactly sure what kind of repair they were looking to do.
Okay. So do you acknowledge that wasn't done yet?
Nope.
Then the rest are just annual monitoring, they're in there?
Yeah, Lake Hose is, is um, committed, we, you guys just signed that agreement tonight.
Yeah, we get money from the state, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, uh, what about the powers generator repair maintenance for this building? It's a two oh seven seven.
It's not, um, we don't, I haven't scheduled anything, I think, with the air conditioners?
No, it's generator.
That, that's actually for one of the fire, police department, and we cover the one for the school, it's part of our, and all you with the school.
Yeah, and they just took care of the school one.
Right, so that's probably-
This is under the town offices?
That's probably already been spent, if you look at the, the single sheet that I gave you, there are a few things on here that is-
Well, I remember signing it, but I didn't, this is under the town offices.
Right, um, I don't have it, go for the school itself. So what, so far out of this seventy thousand dollar budget, we've spent nine thousand three hundred and ninety-three.
Right, so that, that actually has been taken care of, cause that we signed.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, I just saw it on the town office, that's why I asked about it.
Yeah.
While we go to that library.
I think a part of that is the, is this, yeah, the part of that is still outstanding for, um, the, there's two, there's a minor and a major. Service, and I think there's still a minor that's scheduled for the end of the year.
Yeah, no, no, um, did he just break up the door to me again? Have we had any, any movement on the door?
I haven't had the opportunity, I didn't know.
I'll look when we go over there, cause I haven't seen that door and what it looks like, so.
Yeah. Everyone just keeps saying it's a custom door and that it's gonna be a little bit more expensive than.
But we need someone to come out and look at it.
Yeah.
Well, that's, uh, that's something we can follow up on once we take one. What is a golden eagle tank testing?
That's mandated by the state.
What is, like, can you tell me?
Um, they basically go through a test of the tanks, make sure they're not leaking and other things.
What tanks were you talking about?
Um, fuel tanks, yeah, gas and diesel.
Alright.
And then they also have to go through a training certification for the two employees or three employees that are there. That's covered under the other clause.
And didn't we work with Jeff on the garage door with open over there?
He had mentioned that, um.
Remember when he came in one of them?
I think he said he was still looking to do that.
Yeah.
He's trying to do as much in-house, but again, he's very interested in that lighting project that we're proposing. He thinks that that's really important, um.
Once we get that done, we'll see what we got left?
Yeah.
Now, pay for itself.
Broken electrical fitting, a tenant's emergency lighting, we should have replaced.
I heard a alarm.
On the transfer station, replace or repair rotten wood on buildings with plastic wood. Has any of that been done?
I don't, we hadn't touched anything. We, we had, we're just coming into spring now, so now would be time to let me begin that, some quotes to do the work.
Since we're here, let's ask him. Woody, what would be your number one priority at the, uh, transfer station? We got a bunch of, we got a list of stuff here.
I didn't know, he's been long enough. I could tell you what's on the list and then.
Well, come on, come on.
Well, I, I can look out for helpy. Um, I think I actually have an extra. Yeah, I do.
I would say one of them that I remember is a, uh, is the emergency lighting.
Yeah, I see that up here. Two hundred dollars way up top.
That's, uh, that's, that could be done. In fact, uh.
Where was that emergency lighting, Woody?
That's in the, uh, recycling center area.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have some in there, but there's nothing, nothing's ever been in there. What we had, um.
Is it like a, like a battery pilot thing, so?
Well, it'd be the same as your emergency exit light, just like that.
Gotcha.
Well, I think that we have, um, those electricians coming to work at these buildings shortly.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we could talk with them, lean?
Ernie's one of them I'm trying to get a quote on, get the, the price for the emergency lighting at the, um, highway, perhaps, could do this at the same time.
Right, we'll get a little synergy there.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, how about the wood on the buildings there, Woody? The rotten wood?
There is, what I had been doing on like the compactor building and a little attendant shed. Because it's in the direct sunlight, we get beat down there. The paint wasn't lasting, so we just, the wood, when it rotted out, we changed like all the trim boards.
PVC.
And use that PVC wood and it seems to stand up a little better.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do the same thing on the recycling center. As I know on, be on the south end of that building, there's a bunch of rot, there's some broken, you know, trim boards rotted. You know, as it splashes off the concrete and goes into that, up into the wood there.
Yeah.
Um, I know we were looking at there, there's some busted sideboards there, um, pretty much, I mean, it just needs, the building needs some maintenance on it. Mostly the trim work was what the plastic was going for.
Right.
And I know at one point, we discussed, this is five, six years ago, uh, discussed putting, um. Actually vinyl in like three quarters of that building, you know, around the back places where the public isn't at, we talked about vinyl in that building. You know, I don't know if that's something in the future to look at doing, so we don't have to keep painting it. I mean, it just seems to be an ongoing painting issue in that building.
On the backside of it there?
The whole building. I mean, we've painted it. Yeah, we painted the whole building. Um, I, I used to have guys come in in the summer and paint it. Uh, we, since I've been there, we've probably painted it, I don't know, four, five times, six times. I don't know, it's, it's been, it's been several times that it's been painted.
I know that past boards have felt that this was a good start measure, but because we always end up with spending more than we budgeted. That the selected would have a special meeting half hour early, walk through the buildings, one side at a time perhaps, and just take a look at. What we're, our wish list looks like versus what we have, you know, for priorities.
You know, I don't think our building's gonna fall down tomorrow, I don't see that. And you know, I, I think what, before we tack too much down on that building. I'd really like to sit down with the board and go over some future plans, some ideas that I have and see where you wanna go. We're getting to the point where we're gonna have to do something with that building as far as space and that. So maybe if we just did some minor stuff to keep it going and then look at a bigger picture down the road a little bit, might be the smarter thing to do than it. To dump a ton load of the money into the building and go, yeah, we really need to expand this, we need to make some changes in here. But we just dumped a ton load of money into it, now we can't do it. So maybe do some, you know, minor stuff to keep it going and look at a bigger picture.
Well, I'd like to look at the small stuff that can be done, like the emergency lighting.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a threshold that looks like it needs some work.
Yes.
And maybe a couple of electrical repairs.
Yes, and there's a broken window, just, there's a bunch of little stuff, you know, maybe, you know, fix a couple pieces of, where the wood's broke. And if the rotted wood's not super bad, or maybe it can be a matter of just cutting a section out, putting another section in. I've got some stain, we can throw a little stain on, just to get us by until we can come up with a plan, cause you're looking at, and I brought it to the board before, previous boards. You're gonna be looking at a roof on that building, you know, I get it, it's sheet metal. I mean, it's a metal roof. You gotta be looking at doing a roof on there at some point in the near future. So all these little things are like that and paint and all the wrought wood. At some point, we're gonna have to make a bigger building, so I don't know if we wanna be dumping roofs into it and doing this and doing that, and if I know, hey, we really need to expand this. I'd really, you know, at some point, like maybe like Lynn said, come in, you know, like, we could do a walk around down there, you know, anytime, whatever. Just look at some future plans, you know, we're gonna have to do something, you know?
Um, so, do we wanna address some small issues for now? Do we have a?
Well, I, emergency lighting, that's life safety.
Yeah, so we get emergency lighting, we get electrician repairs down the bottom, and we get a threshold between the office.
The, uh, that electrical pair, repair, what it is, is we're kinda in violation. If someone got hurt, we'd be in trouble for it. We have, our air conditioner is mounted in the wall. We have a, a long cord that reaches over to it. By the standard, you're not supposed to have an extension cord feeding that.
Yeah.
We do what we do. There's no outlet close by without removing the heater and moving it.
Adding an outlet and doing that, that could all be done by one, one person, so.
Right.
Maybe, Lee, if you're getting quotes down here, maybe we could ask them to go look at those two items for him?
Yeah, and I think you've, you've hired Ernie before and he's done.
Yeah, yeah, and actually.
Flexible and.
Yeah, the reason I've stuck with him is, once again, I don't have to train the electrician.
Ernie's last name?
Gagnon.
Gagnon.
Okay.
He used to live on Range Way.
Right.
He's done ninety, most of my electrical work, ninety percent of it, you know, that's ten years. So he knows, he knows everything, I don't have to retrain him and show him everything he is, he goes in, does the job.
He could literally call him and say, remember the electrical over in my office, what would it cost, and he could probably figure out with notes.
Man, that's the only, that's the reason I've kept using him.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, Bob, you're kinda quiet, any?
No.
Issues, like?
Okay. I'd like to get the small things done and then.
Yeah.
You know, then we can make decisions.
I, I think the, the biggest thing we're, we're tackling tonight is gonna be the painting. And I think is, uh, the library and some of the building, we have bare wood exposed, that's just inviting rot, and so that.
Yeah, so we'll get on there and get some quotes and then we'll get it done during good season.
Roofing is another, another major issue here. We're tackling that. Again, we could easily overspend our budget quickly.
Yeah.
And so I think, for, for now, I think we have enough to keep the administrative, town administration going on a few quotes.
Right.
Do you think you can get ahold of Ernie and communicate the priority things for him?
And get, if you, if that threshold is something easy, you know somebody that can do that, get us a quote on it and we'll work on that too, okay?
Those, those are, those are like, a- as I said, we don't, building burns down, but you use an extension cord, town gets slapped. We don't need that, we need to get a.
All right, right. It's one of them things that.
You know, we know.
We use it when we're there and then we unplug everything when we're like, you know, when we're not there, it's not plugged in kinda thing.
Okay.
It's, that's why I talk, it's, hey, we gotta do something on this.
Yeah. Any further discussion on town maintenance issues? Okay. Alright, I'm gonna see what else is left. I don't think I have anything left in the, um, in the inbox. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment again. Sir.
Oh, us?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to thank you for, and your wife for coming last Saturday to help us at, uh, Kimball Plawn, cleaning the mill site and the workers' homes.
They had a taskmaster down there who was really kept us busy.
Yeah, Brett.
Leo, I stopped by with it, it looks real nice.
Yeah, it, it really does look good, but I wanted to thank you, your wife, that was really nicely.
And was that, timing was impeccable, because as soon as we got home, it started pouring.
Yeah.
And so, so it was, uh.
But the help putting the signs up was good too, you know?
Except I learned how to, you gotta hold it one way when you put in the ground, the pot stake, the stake pounder, there's, there's opening in this other end with no opening.
You can use, it's reversible, you can use it the way you're comfortable with it.
Leo, I stopped by the conservation commission, thanked them for the work down there too last night.
And like I told Brett, and you, you were there, so you'll know, there were just enough people.
Yeah.
Had you had more people, that people would have been in the way, see? So there were just enough people there working, so.
And rather than taking all the debris down to the, uh, to the transfer station.
Yeah.
Uh, we actually dragged it into the wood line, and so the animals, I think the animals are gonna love that.
And so you didn't burn it on site?
No, we did not.
Well, no, the kids out there will.
Yeah.
Well, you're very welcome, it was a, it was a fun nap, a fun morning.
Yeah, it was a good one, wasn't it?
Yeah. Okay, sir. Okay, bring it to the table.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Dave, you mentioned that matching whites is usually a problem.
Yes.
Now, if the paint is peeling, if you brought a chip, they can usually match that, can't they?
They can, um, but I've found, you know, there is, if you ask any paint supply place, there's so many shades of white.
Right.
They can match it, but the one you're matching, remember, is probably faded or old. So you're not necessarily wanting to match that older color, you're gonna want. One consistent good paint and good primer on that building. And, uh, we don't wanna cheapen up on the paint, because we'll be chasing it the rest of everybody's lives, so.
Uh, don't have to tell me, I've painted my house in twelve years, thirteen years, I painted three times.
Yeah, if we do a portion of the building a side at a time, I'd like to have it as close as possible, but it may not match a hundred percent, because we're gonna. Have new white paint and that's, we don't wanna keep matching old paint.
Yeah, right, but the. The two end walls, north and south wall, you're never gonna see them together. So you know what I'm saying? So you can do two walls, two walls or one wall, one wall, by the time you get to that third wall, you're never gonna see all that stuff.
Right. Um, one other question, did, did the cemetery clean up the area over here?
They've been busy, I know. But it's their.
I just wanted to ask.
Maintenance of the lawn, the cemetery maintenance guy that should be.
I'm keeping an eye on it, cause I'm already getting leaves from that side.
Now, is the cemetery maintenance the guy that's doing the mowing?
No, it's a different, it's a different.
Yeah.
Well, why are we using a different?
It was a contract bid.
Oh.
And so one on the bid, the others understand. This gentleman out here did have the contract one time.
Yeah, years ago.
He, he lost the bid.
Okay.
Okay, Dave, to you, Dave. Anything for you?
Well, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think they're tied into that same contractor for this year, if we're gonna have to put it out, cause Don did look at the.
When's the next cemetery meeting?
They meet on the first Tuesday of the month, so it won't be until June second or June.
If it's not done by then, they're gonna show up.
June sixth.
Clean, do you know when they're scheduled to clean that?
They should have already done it, but again, we have a new.
Done Monday.
We have new trustees on board, so it's giving them a lot of information and asking them to follow up. They got the letter, he had delivered, and it was pointed out.
Because I was out there Sunday and Monday and that is bad, there's big branches, leaves, you name it. And there were stones I couldn't even see, because they were covered with leaves.
Yeah, yeah, and you said those big pieces of wood that, and the wine, I can't clean that.
And once the grass gets tall, that's gonna be a lot harder to clean.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll pass concerns to the cemetery.
I'll send them another.
Yeah.
Memorial Day's coming.
Like I said, I think the contract says something about Memorial Day, isn't it? It'll be a clean form of Memorial Day.
And they should have done it in the fall.
Lee, maybe the guy doesn't even know he has the contractor, nobody's contacted him.
Oh, he does, because he actually came out a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, he has, yeah, okay.
Then Don actually went over there and talked to him, cause he, he, he didn't know who the guy was and, because the old, you know, the turtle, the, the trustees, so.
So disappointing. Okay, uh, close the public comment and we're back to the board, uh, Bob, it's you?
No.
Okay, Lean, to you.
I'm all set, I've covered everything.
And, um, we have no, uh, we have no issues to go into non-publics?
Yes, we do have one. A non-public.
Oh, you know what? She said that they were present and that it might have already resolved itself, so if she's not here, then I think they're good.
Oh, okay. No, they're a task force.
Yes.
Yes.
We're, we're.
She's still here.
We're contemplating going into non-public.
Okay.
Information gathering.
I'm worried, yeah, it doesn't bother me.
But I pointed it out just in case.
And I gotta get out of here sometimes.
I did too, when I cut her.
It's not that comfortable, that's what I was saying.
She actually saw her coming in, she said it might have taken care of itself, she's paid out, so we're, we're good. No deeding.
Oh, good, okay. Then there's no need to go into non-public time?
No.
And, um, I have nothing else for the, for, for this house, except that we're gonna have a quick, uh, walk around meeting, the public is invited to join us. We're gonna walk in the library and take a little walk around, so, and we're gonna walk around, walk about the library.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I wanna see that beam work upstairs, just to know what we're talking about at the next future meetings. And these guys have a little background to describe it to.
I've seen it.
Do you wanna do it tonight, or do you wanna just come in, I'll give you a key and get you, you can get in, walk in?
It might be safer with some more lighting.
That's what I was thinking.
There is no lighting up there.
Well, there is.
Yeah.
Bring a flashlight, okay.
Dark.
So.
Alright, we'll do it another time then.
Yeah, I have the key to the front door and.
In fact, we can. There's a big problem, you know?
I can't fit through the hole.
I barely fit through a hole. I don't think they've switched it.
Nice, Bob.
You can get a sand up there.
No, I'm, I'm, no, but if you wanna see the steel and see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
For Labor Intensive, they have some down on the stage.
A lot of it's laying on the stage.
And it'll show you that, cause going up, well, you can put your head up through there.
Now, when you're seeing the steel, were they attaching it to each of the, every rafter?
Yes.
Yes.
It's augmenting the rafter.
On the ends or this way?
Entire, no, like this, each, each being, each, each rafter is gonna have a, uh, steel, steel support for that. It's gonna be nailed into like every three inches, two inches.
And they were talking about weakening the wood structure.
Well, think of it, think of it as, you know, these, these new, uh, premier, uh, trusses, which are pre-manufactured, how they have these squares and they have these little holes in them, they just put them on the corner.
Yeah, I know how trusses are made.
Okay. Always try to grab the part. Okay, but essentially, the engineer said it's basically follows the same mechanism, it's not that they're looking, the, the, it just adds structure to the whole thing now, so it doesn't move.
And those pieces are going down the, the length of each rafter?
Yes.
Right. And they were cut too short or too long, or made too long or too short?
No, they're not the right angle.
Yeah.
They have to have the, and that's why they need to feel measurement for, some of them might be the same, but there's gonna be a lot of them that differ.
And the thing is, when you see how heavy one piece is, you gotta realize, they gotta let it all back down.
Yeah. I think the, the, the weight on that pole from Cohen steel was five thousand pounds.
So we're taking that roof system over there and adding five thousand pounds to the roof system?
Roof system.
And we're helping it.
Well, the thing is, I, I'm, I'm not gonna second guess the engineer.
You're not?
Because, uh, he's the engineer, I'm not. Okay, so we'll do, we'll, maybe, I, I wanna do it next, uh, next Thursday, maybe meet at six thirty to pull the walkabout.
Can you make it the system? Yeah.
Next week?
It needs to, okay.
Next week?
We don't go into our summer schedule until, uh, June.
Yeah, we can make it six thirty, we, uh, publicly notice that we're doing.
Yes, yes, no. That'd be appropriate.
You wanna do six thirty or six forty-five?
Six thirty, that way we not rushed to come back over here.
Yeah, that'd be nice, I think.
And we were both, we were all here waiting to six thirty.
I might need you all to pull me out of the hole.
I'm gonna go watch.
Well, please.
I'm gonna attend that.
Bring some ham.
I'm more flexible than I look, you know? I'll bring the sauce off.
Right? I barely made it into the thing, so.
And the latter is not exactly, uh, it's rickety.
So I'll call it a sidewalk of the library.
Yeah. Uh, to look at the, the roof.
Six thirty.
The roofing system, the air conditioning system and the, uh.
Door.
Door, and, and the door and the paint.
Listen, I won't be here, because I'll be gone, but, uh, can I have Don videotape that?
Sure.
Might be a comedy.
You're mean.